Can you all hear me?
Yes.
This is a public announcement, Open Public Meetings Act, regarding the board regular meeting on May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. In compliance with Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, and by resolution, notice of this meeting was given by way of annual adequate notice, as provided by the fire, filed with the Borough Clerk, the Hull News Tribune, the Sentinel, and posted in lobby of the Borough South River Municipal Building on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Public notice for venue and time change was posted May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Be further advised that the Planning Board of the Borough South River holds its regular meetings on the third Tuesday of every month at seven P M. Live at the Criminal Justice Center, located at sixty-one Main Street, second level of South River, New Jersey, unless otherwise noticed. The planning board may take formal action at this meeting. Okay. If you're all scared for the closing meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the people of our country. One nation, under God, in the name of this law, of illuminated justice.
Julie, can you do the roll call? Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Mr. Byrne?
Here.
Mr. Clancy?
Here.
Ms. Docley? Dr. McGinnity? Mr. Vanet?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Hammett? Mr. Ox? Ms. Sayula?
Here.
Ms. Wolf?
Here.
Julie, just so you know, Donna, Ms. Hammett, I texted them. She might be a little bit late because she was in the middle of traveling. Okay. First item on the agenda are the minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes from the last meeting?
About hearing, hearing done, if necessary, it would be the minutes over something.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Mr. Clancy, second by Mr. Byrne. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So the minutes are approved. The next item is a resolution for the, for forty-sixth, or excuse me, twenty-sixth? Twenty-sixth Division?
Six.
Oh, sorry, twenty-sixth for Main Street. Are there any questions regarding this, any comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move the resolution for file PB twenty-two dash oh-one will be approved. I second.
Second. So the motion was by Mr. Byrne, second by Mr. Walker, um, all of them, all of them, roll call. Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Clancy?
Upstairs.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
And Sayula?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sayula?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is completeness hearing, uh, PB number twenty-two dash zero-two, uh, Precash Patel two sixteen, oh, it's a church pipe. It's an application to install solar panels on commercial property. The applicant is requesting both variants, setback, and minor cycle of approval.
George, can you talk into the microphone? Good evening, my name is George Prusse, I'm currently in the state of Georgia representing the applicant. I have reviewed the fourth, uh, document. CME.
We're gonna let up the one.
Just take a look, the thing took into it.
There you go. Thank you, Julie.
I've reviewed. I've reviewed the reports from CME and also from Mr. Bignell's office. They think it's not to be completed, plus the, uh, not to be set down for a public hearing.
I think what you said.
I've, I've reviewed the reports from Mr. Bignell's office and also from, uh, Mr., uh, from CME. They have both deemed the application to be complete. And I'm requesting that they now sit down for a public hearing.
Does anybody have any questions on the reports, or any questions on Mr. Prusse?
Any applicants here with a migrant?
What is your pleasure on the application?
Move the PB complete. I second that.
And please on the board's agenda.
And please on the board's agenda for the next meeting.
For a second?
You'd let the record show that Mr. McGinnity has arrived.
I do have one comment and I apologize, but, um, on the checklist, you're requesting a waiver for the, um...
That's, that's an error. We have to do the two-hundred-foot list.
Okay.
Yes.
What we're talking about is the names of owners within two hundred feet.
Yes.
So that will be?
Yes. I agree with that.
Okay, um. There's a question, there's a motion and a second. Ready for discussion? Uh, Julie, you can hold on. Mayor Krenzel?
Here, uh, yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes. You're here.
Dr. McGinnity, Mr. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Vanet?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sayula?
Yes.
And Ms. Hammett, Ms. Wolf?
Here, yes.
Thank you.
Next one. We have no public hearings. So, the next item is our board discussion on Main Street. Um, I'm going to ask Mayor Krenzel just to do a brief statement about, um, what we're doing.
Yeah, the, uh, the master plan, what's... No problem, we're not big enough about it. The master plan was written and adopted in two thousand eleven after workshop conducted right here in Middle School. Between two thousand eleven and today, there were two additional reports regarding the Main Street area that were produced, the Lower Main Street Redevelopment Plan in two thousand and sixteen, and the Main Street Parking Area Strategy in two thousand and eighteen. And most recently, the Planning Board did a required reexamination of the master plan in January of two thousand and twenty-one. As a result of this reexamination, board identified three areas that needed review of attention, Main Street, waterfront, and flood plain issues. Tonight, we're reviewing Main Street. And an effort was made to reach out to the public, particularly those who are part of Main Street area, to jointly discussing what charges, changes needed to be made to, uh, help us revitalize Main Street. You know, doesn't that master plan need to be changed? Are there changes to the ordinances that need to be considered, things like that? Um, there's been some progress, interest in, uh, Main Street, particularly over Capitol Theaters, there are more, uh, there are many new small businesses, but we need to do more to improve our Main Street. Uh, and to make it more viable and to bring it, you know, into the twenty-twenty. So, I thank you all for coming and I'm asking you, uh, you know, please listen to your presentations and give us your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first part of our, um, workshop is, uh, our planner, Todd Luntcher, is going to be doing a brief review of the documents that Mayor Krenzel mentioned, the master plan, uh, the Lower Main Street Redevelopment Plan, and the parking strategy. So I'm gonna turn the mic and the... And for anybody that didn't see, there's copies up. Where buy snacks, buy the water, there's copies of all the materials. So please help yourself. Todd.
If anybody wants to move, which you can see a better...
Good, good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted, before we get started with all the formalities, I, I know everyone sort of, uh... I always like to invite people down here to sort of join us, so that we can sort of all be together. You're welcome to come down if you'd like to. If you want to stay back there just to keep some social distance, that's fine, on this occasion too. But if anyone wants to come on down and join, you know, join the group or sit at the tables down here, you're more than welcome. There are, um, some bottles of water, some drinks, and some cookies, and some, some snacks, uh, at the, at the table up there. Please feel free to help yourself. Um, anytime you can go up and get yourself some, uh, a little snack. Part of the process of what we do here for the workshop is, uh, this is an informal sort of process. You know what, I think I see Mrs. Semper Sopra trying to get into that door. Can't tell. This is an informal sort of process. The formal part of the meeting is over, and this is a discussion, uh, back and forth. Try to, uh, I'm gonna try to give you as much information as I can about the existing plans that we have in place, uh, and what they say, and how they all sort of work together. But to help you with that process, uh, we did make copies of all of those plans, the master plan, the reexamination report, the parking plan, and the Main Street redevelopment. They're all up there, so if you'd like to get a copy, please help yourself. You can get a copy, you can take those home. And, and there's plenty of information in there to take a look at. Uh, so like I said, this is sort of the informal sort of part of the hearing. There's no more action, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight. This is just informational sort of workshop type, type of session, just to get information out there for people, if people want to ask questions. There's gonna be a whole lot of questions at the end, and we'll do our best to answer whatever questions anyone might have. Can you forgive my back, I'm gonna face this way and, uh, just take you through some of the plans and documents that we have. You have copies of all these, and I believe all of them are now available on the Borough website. So even if you don't have a copy, you can always, if you're watching this at home, in the future, you could, you could go to the Borough website and get all of these documents. So we're gonna start out with, uh, the big question of why are we here? And the big reason is that we have a master plan, Borough has a master plan, we call it a comprehensive master plan, because it's a, it's a policy document that we revisit every ten years, and that guides us in how we make policy decisions in terms of land use in the Borough. The last, and the original master plan was written in two thousand and eleven, and in two thousand and twenty-one, we revisited that. It's about a ten-year period of time where it's in effect. And in two thousand and twenty-one, our job is to do something called, to prepare something called a reexamination report, where we take a look at the master plan. We take a look at all of the assumptions that are in the plan. We take a look at all of the things that we assume to be, to be true and accurate. And after a period of ten years, sometimes those facts might change. Some of those things we might need to be revisited. That reexamination report is dated January twelfth. And in it, we basically go through the old master plan, and we recognize all of the issues that were raised ten years ago. And we say, how did we do? Did we fix these issues? Did they become better? Did they become worse? Where do we stand? So all of those details are in the report. I'm not gonna bore you with all of the details, it's quite a bit of reading. But one of the conclusions in that report, and this is on page, uh, well, it's number four, and one of the issues that we raised in the two thousand and eleven master plan was concern with the stagnation of Main Street, the Main Street commercial corridor, particularly over retail competition with highway commercial development on Route eighteen in its brushroom. And we recognize that since the two thousand and eleven master plan was adopted, the Borough's delineated something called the Lower Main Street Redevelopment Area, and Lower Main Street Redevelopment Plan. It's a general plan overlaying Main Street and Ferry Street areas. It's created, it's a redevelopment area in this location with city block designations, with city block as its own sub-area within the plan. We also have something I'll tell you a little bit later about, it's called the MSR Zone, that's a sort of district that's out there. And since two thousand and eleven, we've had a number of projects in Main Street. Just to catch everybody up, to remind everybody, we were ten years ago and where we are now. So, thirty-seventh Main Street, the, the Capitol Theater day green property that was converted to thirty-six residential properties, uh, residential apartments. We've had an application for approval for forty-sixth Main Street. There's never construction started on that, but the approval is in place. We have a separate application for forty-eighth Main Street, dropped by the first floor of that building with a three-thousand square foot grocery store, and to create a rear connection to the Borough parking lot. At thirty-two Main, there's an application approved for a tavern in that building. At seventeen-nineteen Jackson, adult group abuse was granted approval to occupy that building. At thirty-two Main, there's an application for a cigar smoking lounge, was submitted, but later withdrawn. At seven Main, there was a, uh, there's a pending application for the former Laughlin Hotel property to turn that into a mixed-use property. At sixty-five Ferry, uh, there was a certificate of pre-existing non-reformity granted to for boarding house use, over the Borough's objection, and that was granted by the court. At one Clouds Lane and Water Street, there's an application approved to create a freestanding parking lot in the site to serve other uses in the MSR Zone. At six Jackson, there's a bank application approved with site plan approval to revamp the bank property and drive-through. At one-on-one Main, there was site plan approval to prevent tire sales and storage inside the building. At one hundred Main, there's an application to convert a, uh, single-family into a two-family. That application was denied. At two thirty-five Main, there was an initial application to convert a two-family. That application was denied. At one ninety Main Street, there was an application to convert that building to a two-family. That application was denied. At fifty-six Main, there was an application to divide the retail spaces, smaller retail spaces. At eighteen Jackson, there was an application approved to permit multi-family units in that building. At seventeen Main, there was an application granted to repurpose, uh, former law office into a commercial space. At twenty-eight Main Street, there was a taxi business approved, granting the use variables to occupy existing building. Fifty-two Main, the application approved to permit gold sales and repair. And also notice in two thousand and seventeen ordinance relaxing the requirements for outdoor dining in the MSR Zone. Uh, and the two thousand and eighteen, uh, uh, parking ordinance, which was adopted and then later rescinded. So those are just the synopsis of it, in the past ten years, where we've been since the two thousand and eleven master plan. Just to give everybody a little bit of information, with a little bit of refresher on, on how some of this stuff works, we have a comprehensive, back on the screen now, we have a comprehensive master plan. If you, if you wanna go get it from the Borough website, it's here, it's fully missing. This whole document is up there, if you wanted to go take a look at it. It's available for you to, uh, I'll be best to download it. I'll not try to print it out, but you're welcome to take a look at it. It's all there, available on the Borough website. So what a master plan is, is really a long-term policy document that deals with how you develop your community. I like to call it planning at ten thousand feet. And what I mean by that is when you're in a plane, and you're sort of like flying over, you know, the neighborhood approach, and you can sort of look down and see South River, what do you see at that level? You don't see a really gradual level of someone's individual property. You see big zones, and you see types of uses. Industrial areas over here, forested areas over here, overdeveloped areas over there, traffic circulation use over there. That's the kind of thing you're looking at when you have a master plan. It's sort of a higher-level flyover, cut-time approach to things. The master plan is the basis, the legal basis for your zoning ordinance. If you don't have a master plan, you can't have a zoning ordinance. So everything that comes out of that zoning ordinance has to be, uh, has to have a basis in that master plan. One of the benefits of having that plan is that it protects against changing trends. Sometimes, um, you know, a few new things sort of become popular, and the reason we have a master plan is that we have consistent policies that deal with development, that we don't sort of change things because of trends that might emerge. Or if we do, then we go through a very designated process to make those changes. Purpose of having a master plan is also so that we do proactive planning, not reactive, so that we're not reacting to development applications. But before they come, we're saying, what zone should we wear? What usage should we wear? What neighborhood should look like? What Main Street should look like? What the waterfront area should look like? And then we're going and creating zoning ordinances with all the minutia to try to provide those development regulations, so that when development applications come, we get the uses that, that we want for those areas. So all then, your orders always need to be based on your master plan. This is just, I just did a couple screenshots in the slides today, so you can see all sorts of different, different screenshots, and different fonts, and things where I just picked up to give you, uh, some examples. This is just your, a screenshot from your master plan. Your master plan actually has a few pages that are dedicated to Main Street. And just so everyone has that information, I printed those out for you, thank you, Julie, you did all printing and copying. Um, and we, we gave those to you, and that, that's up here. It's this, it's this sheet here, and you can even see the cover page is like another workshop that we did a couple years ago. So this is, I don't wanna print out the whole master plan and give you, you know, extra superfluous information, but we do have the master plan, just the snippets that relate to, you know, the Main Street area, what the master plan community goals are, the assumptions that are based in the plan, the policies that are based in the plan, goals and objectives. It's just a brief sort of synopsis of what the master plan says about the Main Street area, zoning ordinances, Main Street, New Jersey, and then the last two or three pages is specific to the Main Street and Ferry Street downtown businesses. So our master plan has some very specific, um, policy recommendations in the plan, and then there's a map outline of the, the area now. So we printed this out for everyone too, just to give everyone a refresher on, you know, what the master plan says about Main Street. This way you don't have to go, go find it yourself, you can, you can take the handout, okay? So once we have a master plan in place, the next thing that Borough council does is they adopt something called zoning ordinance. Uh, for Main Street, the zoning ordinance that we have in place is called the MSR Zone, Main Street Rehabilitation Zone. This is a zoning district that's in place right now. Anybody can use it. If someone is, say, making a, a building addition to their building, this is the zoning district that they use, it's called the MSR Zone. It's in place, it's for everyone to use, and it's written to be pretty forgiving and allow active zoning district. It permits all neighborhood types of businesses. It's already in the zone, it's not the new, without proposing any change. You see, I'm just giving everybody a refresher on what already is in the zone right now. So the MSR Zone right now permits all neighborhood businesses. It permits apartments, upper floors only, but it permits apartments. It permits all office uses. It permits restaurants, it permits cafes. In terms of structure and height, it permits three-story buildings. And we specifically wrote the ordinance to be, uh, forgiving or to be, uh, to be designed to not hurt, but to help businesses by not requiring ground-floor parking for permitted uses. That's already in the ordinance, that's not changed, it's been there for the past ten or so years. The MSR Zone, ground-floor permitted uses, don't require parking. See, it's waived. Upper floor uses do, but ground floor permitted uses. So if you had, for example, a three-story building, restaurant, cafe on the bottom, two floors of apartments above, the, the ground floor restaurant, cafe would not have parking requirements, in terms of how it's parking needs to provide. But the upper floors, those apartments do have parking requirements, right? So ground floors are permitted, as long as they're permitted uses. Uh, and the gist of the MSR Zone is that the buildings go to the front, and the parking and loading goes to the rear, so we have an attractive street scheme. All of the sort of ugly things, the loading, dumpsters, utilities, meters, wires, transformers, and all that stuff goes to the back, and we try to present the nice side of the building, the front side, centered around Main Street. Here's the next slide, just to give you a sense of what we're talking about when we talk about Main Street. I pulled this from one of the Main Street plans that we have. All the parcels and paint are in the Main Street area. It's the same sort of piece of geometry that's in the plan. Nothing new here, uh, you can see it extends all the way. You can see Main Street is the sort of, what's labeled there. Goes all the way up to Thomas, down on the left is Gordon, um, sent all the way to Gordon, and then all the way back to Jackson. A little bit, they have Jackson with those two other parts right there. So when we say Main Street, we don't need literally Main Street, it's the main Ferry over, you can see the little, the frontage is there. So that's what we're talking about, we say the Main Street area. Sometimes it's called Lower Main Street. So that's what we're talking about. In the text of that MSR Zone, the Main Street Zone, it has goals. And these are master plan level goals. And this is the goal of what we want to achieve, the goal of the regulations that are in the text, that's to create an attractive mixed-use district, a low main Ferry, appropriate tempo in buildings, that means we don't have huge buildings, but we have buildings that create tempo where every couple seconds or every twenty-five feet, you come to a new shop, a new store, a new outlet, a new, um, entrance, so that the sort of tempo that you feel when you walk down the street, is, is something that's, it, it, we call that a walk. So we don't have a large format. Use is there because to walk between them would be, would be not conducive to having a Main Street. It's small format, small restaurants, cafes, um, that sort of thing on the Main Street. Um, we're interested in street scheme improvements, street trees, sidewalks, benches, street lighting, um, wayfinding signs, all the things that sort of make that street a more walkable place, especially for pedestrians. The other goals of the plan are to provide for new retail, uh, and other non-residential space along Main Street. We wanna try to encourage retail and other non-residential spaces. Um, the plan already allows for density bonus or floor area bonus. Um, when you, uh, when you develop according to the zones, we want to encourage, it's, it's, it's to incentivize people to come in, rehab, rehabilitating, redevelop, prepare, rebuild old buildings that are not in pedestrians. Um, part of the goals here too, to provide a coordinated parking program, because parking in the Main Street area is really an individual asset. It's really a, almost like a utility that everyone sort of starts to use and share. And then, uh, one of the goals, to eliminate buildings that are in poor repair, encourage development, pedestrian-friendly scale. It's the pedestrian-friendly downtown scale, like I said before, where it's not an area that's dominated by traffic, whizzing by at fifty miles an hour. It's, it's supposed to be for downtown walkability. So that's what's in place right now for the Main Street MSR Zone. Uh, most of the development that we've seen the last ten years has come through, in the Main Street area, has come through the MSR Zone. So that's what the zone is. Um, the text is available, it's not really something you sort of sit down and recover and cover, but the master plan is a little bit more authoritative, you know, in terms of what's in there. But I just wanted to refresh everybody's understanding of what the ordinance is, what it says, and what it allows. And all this stuff is in place right now, you know, without proposing any changes to any of this. I just wanted to get this line in here too, just, I know a lot of the board members are here, and it's just, I thought it'd be informational for, for some of those who might not be on the planning or something, but, um, what happened, the development applications are presented in the town. They're presented to either the planning board or the zoning board, and sometimes people confuse these boards of what their responsibilities are. So I just wanted to spend just a minute, just for refresher or education, uh, for something you might not know, is that we have a planning board. Uh, the planning board is a board of permitted uses. So everything that comes before a planning board is a permitted use. It's something that we've said in our zoning ordinance, we want this here. So everything that comes before the planning board doesn't need any sort of use variance approval, because the use is already permitted by ordinance. The zoning ordinance permits whatever's being permitted. The zoning ordinance permits whatever's being proposed. Those applications go to the planning board. Uh, the planning board here, site plan applications, and again, those are all permitted uses. So that would be a restaurant in a restaurant zone, a warehouse in a warehouse zone, a single-family home in a single-family zone, those sort of types of applications. And they also propose, uh, here subdivision applications. That's when lots are redivided on smaller parcels. The planning board has the sole responsibility of adopting a master plan. Uh, that doesn't happen by the council. That's the planning board's responsibility to adopt the master plan. And every other planning board is appointed, except the council person is appointed by the mayor. It's the mayor's, uh, board and, and peruse to make the appointments in the planning board. Completely different board is the zoning board adjustment. The zoning board is the board of not permitted uses. Everything that's before a zoning board is either not permitted because the use is not permitted. For example, a warehouse in a residential zone or, um, uh, a business in, in a, in a, say, business in a residential zone. Planning board, I'm sorry. The zoning board also hears applications for uses that are too high or have a floor area ratio that are too big for the standard that we have in our ordinance. It's, you can think of that as bulk, the ratio of the floor area from building to the property. Zoning board hears those applications because they're really, they're questions of intensity. How high something's going to be, what the FAR is going to be, what the density is going to be. Zoning board is a quasi-judicial board. It's empowered by the state statute. I like to describe it, I don't know if I get myself in trouble with the terminology, but I, I sort of like to describe the zoning board similar to a jury, but also similar to like, sort of like the Supreme Court. In, in that way, in that you're making findings of fact. That you're hearing testimony, like sworn testimony. You have to follow the law and you're making findings of fact. Sometimes, I don't know if anyone has been on a jury before. You know, you go in to hear the jury instructions and, and sometimes, you know, the facts of the case might be a person or a situation that you don't like or you feel uncomfortable with whatever's being presented. But the jury's always instructed, you have to follow the law. You can't make a decision based on whether you like something or don't like someone or have any biases against it. You have to hear the application, listen to the facts, apply the law and make a determination. And that's what zoning boards have to do. That's why it's a quasi-traditional sort of environment, a little bit different than a planning board. Uh, everyone that comes before the zoning board is always entitled to a fair hearing, even if their application that they don't like, um, or, or not supportive of or don't think are good ideas. Everyone's entitled to that fair hearing, if everything's provided on a sworn testimony. Zoning board members are appointed by the councils. So planning board appointed by the mayor, zoning board appointed by the council. We have both of these boards here. We need those boards for the amount of development applications we have here. Um, but just wanted to just give a little bit of information on those, why, why we have those, how they're different, different boards. Okay, um, the other thing we have in place is the Main Street redevelopment plan. That's this one. It's this, it's this one here. It's, uh, the horizontal one. We'll have cottons for everybody. This is a little bit different than the MSR zone. This is a redevelopment plan because we have a redevelopment area that's been adopted for Main Street. Uh, the redevelopment area is basically like a zoning district. Um, but development in the redevelopment area can occur according to the redevelopment plan, which acts like, almost like an overlay zoning district. The reason we have an MSR zone and, and a lower Main Street redevelopment plan that works on top of it is because we wanted to incentivize even more the redevelopment of Main Street. So if, in looking through the MSR zone, uh, what it allows in terms of pipe, the number of units and bulk and number of stories and parking, even that is not attractive enough. There's even more attractive development provisions in the redevelopment plan. Uh, and that is divided by city plot. Each city plot is a different sub-area and there are slightly different standards in different sub-areas, but they're all generally the same. Uh, that Main Street plan is, is designed to incentivize assembly of land. One of the issues you deal with here in South River is that the parcels on Main Street are so old and so small and so irregular that you get some really sort of odd walls or Jerry Sanders shapes of lots in a Main Street redevelopment, difficult. Because of difficulty in access that every front, uh, property fronts on Main Street. Sometimes you get these little skinny things, you get flag lots, you get all sorts of different shapes. So the Main Street redevelopment plan works, it says, the more lot you can sample, if you could get two or three pieces and assemble and make a higher lot area, you could build bigger and higher. It incentivizes putting those pieces together. This is all in effect, there's, there's nothing new here. This is, nothing is being proposed that's any different. This is already in effect right now. Um, it allows things that redevelopment statute allows, developers agreements. Uh, the most powerful tool of using the redevelopment law is the, is the financing. And it's not something that I have any particular expertise in. Um, it's really more of a bond financing sort of thing. Um, but that is, is for people who, municipalities that use this, a financing tools that they generate from the revenue streams is, is the most powerful thing and the reason why they're using redevelopment statute. Um, the statute allows for, uh, an agency or entity. Uh, it can be the Borough Council or it can be an official agency or Borough Authority, the housing or parking authority. Those are the only entities under the statute that are allowed to effectuate a redevelopment plan. Borough, the agency or the housing or parking authority designated, but no other entities are allowed to, administratively administer the redevelopment, uh, plan on behalf of Borough. The, these tools are only authorized by the Borough Council. The Borough Council authorized this, this is in place. And just a reminder, we said it many times before, but our redevelopment area is a non-convention redevelopment area. It doesn't permit any sort of eminent domain, it doesn't permit intakings, doesn't permit any sort of convention at all. It's not allowed under any circumstances in our plan. Just, we said that before, but just a reminder for everybody. And if you flip through the redevelopment plan, you see things like this. This is just one of the graphics from one of the, uh, one of the zones or the sub-areas. Um, it just shows you how, you know, the kind of buildings we're looking for and how we want the program inside. So on the ground floor on the left, in that little pink thing, you see, it can be retail space, it can be structured parking. We want the residential above. We don't want the residential on the ground floor, we want the retail on the ground floor or parking on the ground floor, perhaps even office space, high-traffic uses. But we don't want the residential on the ground floor, we want that above. You can see where you can build a three-story building in some, some areas. In some areas, if you gather enough property, you can even build a four-story building, maximum height 48 feet. But when you do that, it's to try to minimize the bulkiness of these large buildings. The, uh, the topmost floor is steps back. It's not the entire footprint of the fourth floor. It gets smaller and it should grow up so as to reduce the bulkiness of the building in some of these areas. You can see down in the street, the little people are, um, the whole design scheme is that we have a building that fronts on the street, right up on the street. Sometimes it's zero foot setback. Uh, could vacillate to zero and five feet. We're finding now with COVID that a lot of these developments, the buildings, that provided that five-foot setback, that front setback, now have a perfect little area for outdoor lighting. Doesn't block the sidewalk. People still get in that in the right way. It's enough for a, either double Y or single, single Y table. Um, in that little five-foot area, it works out perfectly. That five-foot front setback, um, there's usually been a 10-foot sidewalk or less in that area. It's really curved ends. On-street parking, we put that on-street parking there in the downtown of Main Street area because we want to create separation between the cars zooming by and the people that are walking by, like a little, little, little protection. And you can see that, you know, how important street trees are and anything that looks like, uh, you know, a nice, nice area. This is the kind of stuff we have in the redevelopment plan. This is sort of what it goes through, tells you what the kind of buildings we want and how we want them to look. There's something else we have. Uh, if you go back to the goals of the, uh, of the master plan. And it's an issue we dealt with quite in the past couple of applications. We, we have, the planning board came up with something called the Main Street Parking Area Strategy. This is the fourth handout that I made copies for you. It's about an eight-page document. But what we did is Main Street Parking Area Strategy. Sometimes I call it a plan, it's really more of a strategy because it's sort of, it's more text than anything else, but it goes through, um, it goes through all of the parking issues that have been raised and discussed for the Main Street area. So it talks about why we need a parking strategy. It talks about the purpose of having that, to examine our existing policies so that we have a comprehensive parking philosophy for the whole area. So that we're not changing policy all the time, it's different length officials. Um, like, uh, um, you know, public domain office and policies will change and that we have a consistent plan, a consistent policy that everybody can agree on, we put in place. Um, we recommended policy ordinance changes in this and then, um, developed a set of sort of, towards the back, a set of, um, I guess principles, you can call them. Um, but there's, there's quite a bit of information here that I think a lot of people will find interesting. We inventoried every parking space, uh, and every public parking space the Borough has. In the municipal lots and on-street parking, we inventoried those. We came up with an approximate of 130-meter spaces and 119-unmeter parking stalls. So a total of 249, uh, 249 some parking spaces in that area. Um, and it discusses things like this, but trying to recognize what the parking needs are, depending on who you are, residents need parking during the day and overnight parking. Businesses need, businesses need parking over day, but parking that's close to community to their businesses. Businesses need short-term loading on a shared basis so that they can get their deliveries without blocking traffic. Uh, businesses that are high turnover need easily available slots. Retail, um, retail types of businesses need that quick turnover. Uh, restaurants need evening, long-term parking, long-term parking daytime for their employees. They also need short-term parking for their customers. Uh, things like special events, um, long-term parking needed for that. And different reasons, like schools, houses of worship need parking daytime for their employees. Long-term evening or weekend parking for all the religious activities that go out there. Um, depending on, you know, what day of the week is the peak operation for that particular house of worship or school, uh, use. Uh, same thing with municipal facilities, they need that daytime parking, long-term evening parking and even weekend parking. So all of this sort of, the details is, I'm really glossing over this really, really quickly. There's a lot more detail in all of these plans. But I just wanted to like, sort of bring all these things up, just to refresh everybody's memory that we discussed all of these things. And these plans exist and we sort of talked through a lot of the details in here. And, um, sometimes you, you know, you sort of set it up for them and if you get, you know, a few years ago, we made a parking plan. And, you know, we can always go back and revisit and see what it says. The parking plan has, in the back of it, it says Main Street Parking Area Policy Principles. And there are sort of five or six categories of policies, general policies. There's no full vision, it's policies to consider when you're talking about, um, the parking utility, like what the policies of the parking utility should be. Um, when considering future municipal locations and new future municipal facilities, what should be your guiding principles when you're making those decisions? Uh, when you're considering parking ordinances? Uh, and when you're considering parking relief? So those are for the boards, planning and zoning boards, where they're hearing applications that might be requesting parking relief. How do you, how do you hear that application? What do you consider? Um, when someone's asking for parking variance, what, what, what's the priorities for how that parking gets provided? Or how the, the variances get granted? So when someone asks for relief, how do we handle that? And then finally, uh, there's information, policy recommendations for a capital fund. It's a capital fund of money's, uh, for capital cost of parking. So, I, I, again, I think we produced everything in here, but just to take it back to one of the more interesting ones in here that I find interesting. For development applications, there's specific policy recommendations. These are sort of master plan level policies that the parking plan says we should consider when we're hearing a development application for anything that involves a parking variance. So it's listed in sort of order of precedence. So number one is, our pres, pres, preference overall is that parking should always be integrated on the ground level, on the development site where your building is being built, whenever possible. First sort of choice would be to put parking right there on that particular site. There's a lot of cases, especially in the Main Street area where you have small lots and access problems and sort of oddly configured parcels where it's physically impossible. I always think of a Hummer's site, uh, property as a sort of classic example. Someone bought just that property, wants to redevelop it, there's physically no place anyone can literally ever put a parking space there. Building covers 100% of the property. So if we were strict about the parking under number one, we would never be able to redevelop a property like that without granting a variance because there's physically no place to put parking. You have to have some other sort of strategy or policy goal or some other sort of way of thinking about it. And we wanted to be specific in that and that's what we spelled out in the Parking Area Strategy. So under number two, when, when variances, parking relief is going to be granted for the development application, we have a list of priorities and they're in sort of order of precedence. Priority one is the first priority, that's our first choice. We put our number one preferences to put parking on-site whenever possible, as much as you can. If that's not available for all of the parking that's required, maybe move on to parking priority number two. Again, it's all in the plan. The second choice or the second preference under priority two would be to provide off-site parking via contribution to a capital fund, uh, to construct new parking. Now, that fund was in place, uh, ordinance was in place, uh, the Borough Council rescinded that ordinance, um, for, for a whole number of reasons. But that's still priority in the plan and perhaps even at the end of this process, we might be able to get back to the council, um, with a policy recommendation of how, how to fix that or how to move forward with that. Priority three, if you can't do number one and two, we should provide off-site parking in a Borough parking facility and buy permits. And we've done that with multiple developers, uh, and users around town that needed a certain number of spots. We said, okay, go buy X number of spots in the Borough parking, um, parking authority lot. And those are the inter- perpetuity, I mean, they tend those forever. That's how you meet your parking requirement. Priority four is provide off-site parking in some sort of private arrangement. There's a church, BMW Knights and Club is all next to your building. You know, you could do some sort of private arrangements, some sort of private, uh, lease. That's our fourth choice. And then the fifth and final choice is dislay off-site market, pay the meter, uh, sort of the laissez-faire sort of approach to parking. So that's where the parking, that's the kind of stuff that's in the parking strategy. It's strategy, it's sort of policy recommendations on how to, how to hear these types of applications. So that is just a synopsis of everything that we, we've done in the past more than 10 years for the Main Street area. The master plan is the fundamental document, zoning ordinance comes from that. Redevelopment areas sort of lives on top of that and provides extra incentives and then sort of tie everything together when we have a Main Street Parking Area Strategy. That Parking Area Strategy applies to all types of applications. Zoning, uh, under the MSR zone or the redevelopment plan. So that sort of ties everything together. I'm going to take a break here, take a breath, it's important. Uh, but that pretty much wraps up the informational information I wanted to give you. Um, my goal today was to just sort of be able to give everybody, um, sort of a refresher on what plans we have, what they say and what they, what they provide. So I'm going to, I guess I'm going to turn it over for Max and our Chipper. So you want me to get it back over to you in a second?
Um, we do have questions and discussion, but before I'd like to open it up to the floor. I'd like to ask, uh, Tony Sealan to do just a very brief description of what the EDC is doing.
Thank you Cindy. Um, EDC Economic Development Committee, uh, they are working diligently to do the redevelopment downtown. Uh, we're in the process of working with the attorneys to start a 501(c)(3) corporation. Uh, that's not part of the Borough where we'd be eligible for grants for Main Street. And they are looking into redeveloping some of the lower ends of Main Street where nothing has been done since probably Sandy. And that had become part of our parking situation and things like that. So we're just working on that now. Uh, the EDC is going full force forward with the redevelopment of Lower Main Street. So they're working diligently on that. So that's the report, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the floor now to any of the, uh, anyone here. Uh, if there's any thoughts, comments, uh, suggestions about the master plan or the parking strategy or the Main Street redevelopment plan. If anybody has any comments, suggestions, things that they regard need to be changed, what are your thoughts? Can we put you all to sleep?
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Um, let me, let me raise an issue, uh, if you want to take a look at the Main Street, at the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. There's a lot of, um, suggestions in there about, uh, what the building should look like, about the parking, uh, is that the way we should go? Is there some thought that, that needs to be rethought or changed, or something like that would work? Okay, well...
I just... I think you might want to just come up to the mic so everybody can hear you, yeah.
Yeah. Scott Gordon, eighty-four third Street. Uh, with the parking, with the way the parking is strictly metered, my name is Scott Gordon, the Board of the EDC, eighty-four third Street. So, with the downtown parking, it's strictly metered right now? Is that, that's what the plan is, it's going to stay metered?
There's, there's no change, all these plans are already in effect.
Okay.
So, there's no, none of this is, anything the board is acting on, they're not adopting any changes, they're not...
So, maybe just staying what it is?
Right, so, if there's something that you think needs to change, if you're, if you're saying, hey, you know what, the metering doesn't work, or, you know, I don't know, whatever, you need more meters, or you want, whatever it is, but...
Or the timing.
The timing, or the dollar figure, or the...
My, my question is, is it, the metered parking downtown, is it money, or is it credit card, like how was it set up?
So, my understanding right now is they take coins, okay, and I think the dollar, I shouldn't say dollar, the, I think it's nickel, right, isn't it? What are they called?
Quarters, quarters, dimes to nickels.
Right, it's, it's quarters, dimes to nickels, right? And, I mean, you know, it's, eventually, we're going to have to join the nineteenth century and get a system where, you know, credit cards...
That's one of the things that should get, because a lot of people like to...
Right, so, all the modern systems...
So, we have to make another challenge.
Right, so, all the modern systems are parked mobile, or these other systems where, you know, you, on your phone, you got the app, you plug the number in it, it counts your time down, as you're sitting in the restaurant, if it's about to expire, you could put fifteen minutes more on the meter, you know, eventually, we're going to, you know, need to...
That was my question, whether it's out of hand, or it's not.
There's no specific plan to do that right now, but it's, you know...
I mean, it's, I don't know, that's an issue, I'm just listening, because I want to say we're not really changing the parking situation too much, we can't do much with it, because of the space and the area, but that could just be a convenience for those people who come from out of town, or are in town, you know, you run downtown or something like that, and I think, you know, like, if I turn the parking, I'll be, you know what, I'll be up there, I won't have to worry about it.
So, I guess...
It's not a big thing.
So, I guess your, your comment is, we need to modernize this.
Yeah, we need to modernize, I mean, we're twenty-four-two, not, like you need to, uh, you know, we need to look at things from a standpoint of where we are in time, not where we work. Uh, I hear a lot of historic, but what's really historic about Main Street anyway? The people that live in town aren't who they used to be, and we need to focus on the current people that live here, not, we used to live here, and that, that's a thought that just runs on my mind, like, look on Main Street, do shopping there. Where are they from? A lot of them are from here, or from outside of Main Street, but what's their nationality? What's their background? We need to have, my opinion is, somebody from their nationality have a say and speak to them about what are they saying, what do they want, what are they looking for? Because they're going to be here shopping downtown anyway, we need to introduce them into what we're doing downtown, not just from the outside of downtown, right? From the people that are on the edge of town. And I look here, and I'm like, there's like, how many people here, compare the hundred people in the town. So, I think we need to do a better job of informing people of things that we want to do, or we're looking to do. I don't know how to do that, you know, other than social media, everybody seems to complain on Facebook a lot, but, you know, just something that I see that maybe we need to go at things, be supportive of people, uh, hey, we need, we need your say, we need your input, you know, we're trying to do something if we want you to be a part of it. I don't see a lot of that, other than memos going out, but I think people need to speak up, and try to attract more people to town that aren't, you know, good with people that are here, you know, kind of like voting day, we get how many people, how many people are telling us. Just saying, so I think we need to just modernize the board, try and look for where we're at, where we're going, you know, we're not as big as some of the other towns out there, you know, examples, we don't have the land to do with it, but what can we do in smaller towns that have been, to fit their towns? And just look at it from that standpoint, and maybe do that, you know, but I think parking is just something simple we can do, modernize and make it simple for everybody.
Do you, while you're here, do you think there's enough parking for people that can give...
Um, I, I'm not downtown every day, so I can't really say, I just know Main Street crowded, and I don't know if people are utilizing the lot, I just know the lot was really not great to fit in. I mean, most of the guys, again, most of the people in town, you have a lot of contractors here, you know, I have pickup trucks, you could barely fit through the parking lot.
You're talking about the municipal lot?
The municipal lot, you know, even on Main Street, you can't fit in spaces, so where guys on pickup trucks going to stop on the way home, or go out to the store locally, they got to buy a spot to park a lot, and they're going to be able to fit. Not saying we have to build everything for pickup trucks, but when you have a lot of contractors, you have to look at what you have in your town, who's utilizing the area, what you're doing, and not necessarily commenting, but account for it. You know, it's going to be a way to, kind of improve your area, get people to see what they're doing, and see what they're looking for, you know, because a lot of them will be like, well, I was going to go in air truck, it's a lot easier to have, it's a hassle for me to go downtown, and I wrote down a support on the highway, just convenient for me, it's a lot easier. So, that's what I have to add.
Anyone else?
One, one thing, um, if you could, Todd, just comment on the federal zone that has occurred since the two thousand one master plan.
Sure, thank you very much for bringing that up, I'd love to bring that up. I had my notes here, but it, it's a, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a confusing thing. You're talking about the federal opportunities zone, and this was, when I asked my Congress with the tax, uh, tax act of nineteen twenty nineteen, um, and it's called the federal opportunity zone, so everybody thinks it's a zoning district, it's not, it's got nothing to do with zoning, it doesn't have anything to do with our master plan or zoning ordinances, but it's a federal, um, area, so just how they came up with this is that, um, with all due respect to everybody who's, who's living in this neighborhood, uh, they took the worst performing census tracts in the state, the bottom five percent worst performing census tracts in terms of economic performance, um, and they said, those are the areas that we're going to, uh, deem this federal opportunity zone. Um, so, if, and, and right now, if you remember, if you go back to the map, it's this one. So, Main Street on this map is the dividing line, so you have three census districts in town, everything above Main Street is one, from Main Street down about halfway or so, um, maybe not the high schools, another one, actually, the railroad is the separator, the old rail line, and then everything below is the third census tract. So, everything north of Main Street, so like north to the left there, is that one census tract, and unfortunately, it's one of the worst performing census tracts in the state in terms of household income. Uh, what the, what the federal act said is that, it's really complicated, it's really more of a tax thing than it is a planning thing, but what it basically says is that, um, if you are an investor in those properties, um, you own a property, whatever, when you own a property, you own the asset, the building, and then the, the land, right? And, um, as you file your taxes every year, uh, for the, for that, you know, for that asset, you have to take depreciation, so over, it's like twenty-eight and a half years, straight line depreciation, the asset, the building, will depreciate down to nothing. The land value never goes away, but after a certain period of time, it depreciates the way the IRS makes into your taxes, right? So, let's say thirty years later, you sell that property for the same thing you wanted for, same, ignore inflation, you know, that sort of stuff. The IRS basically says, oh, you sold, you sold an asset that's, you've depreciated, you made a tremendous gain, give us our taxes, right? So, what the, what the federal opportunity zone says is, when you're physically in that area, and you own an investment property, when you sell that property for that capital gain, you can be exempt from the taxes, or a large portion of them, on the capital gain, if you reinvest the money in another property in the federal opportunity zone, okay? So, it's really less more of a tax thing than it is a zoning thing, it's sort of something you do with your account, you know, as, as, you know, property owners and investors sort of, you know, manage their properties, um, but it is certainly something that we should be promoting, um, and a lot of communities are promoting it, but some, sometimes you shoot side, you know, do business in this town, or a federal opportunity zone, tax benefits can be very, very lucrative for you. I see it a lot with, um, uh, commercial advertising for commercial real estate property, they'll say, you know, this building, uh, three quarters acre, so many tenants, in a federal opportunity zone. Uh, so, that's, that's kind of how that works, um, I don't really deal with it, you know, in my, in my wheelhouse very much, um, but I know that, um, the, the folks that are really, um, getting the benefit from it are the ones that are buying these properties, rehabbing them, holding them for a certain period, selling them, and then reinvesting in the area, just sort of making, going through that churn. The other way that a lot of these properties, I don't realize that they're getting sort of picked up in this federal opportunity zone is through a, through a real estate investment trust, so these large funds of money are going out and buying distressed properties, rehabbing them, you know, for, for profit, you know, they're for-profit businesses, they rehab the properties, and they hold them for certain periods of time to maximize tax benefits, and then they sell them, and then they reinvest the money, the monies, and the REITs are always going into, uh, opportunity zone, properties, you're just, you're sort of rolling into the pond, it becomes more of an investment tool than anything else.
Okay, I have one more question before, um, and that's, are there things that are in the plan or in any of the parking strategies that people feel are, um, disincentive for people to, uh, come into town and develop property, or, um, that are problems that need to be overcome, or need to be looked at? Well, I encourage you to take a look at what's in, I know there's a lot of material in all things that's, that Todd went through and then we handed out, um, if you have any comments, I ask you to, you know, send a text, email to Julie, she'll get them to the right place, and I thank you all very much for coming this evening. Uh, before we end, we have to, um... Is there any other discussion by the board? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
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 Meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much for coming this evening.